Okay. Hello and welcome. I'm calling the Monday, August 25, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting to order here at 6:30 PM. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend here in the council chamber, or they also may watch this meeting on Zoom. And all the information about how to access that is on our website, which is burnsvillemn.gov/meetings. We're also available on Comcast Channel 16 or Channel 859. More, as I said, more information is available on our meetings webpage and also in the agenda for this meeting. Item number one is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda by commissioners? None. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff? Nope. No changes to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item number two is the election of Chair and, well, we're right into it. Election and Chair and Vice Chair. So nominations are now open for the Chair of the Planning Commission. And just, just to explain, we, we do this at the start. Every year, we, we renominate a new Chair and Vice Chair. So nominations are now open for Chair of the Planning Commission. Members may nominate anyone, including themselves. No second is required for nominations. Multiple nominations are allowed. I, so before I, I'm gonna nominate, I'm gonna nominate Karen Braddock. Are there any other nominations? Okay. If there's only one nominee, hearing on nominations are closed. If there's only one nominee, all those in favor of electing Commissioner Braddock as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Any nays? No. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, Karen, it says right here, "The new Chair may proceed withholding the Vice Chair election." So, you're it.
Alright, cool. Well, I think at this time, we'll be taking nominations for the Vice Chair of the Commission. Members may nominate anyone, including themselves. Can I get any nominations?
Yeah. I nominate John Hamilton.
I also nominate John Hamilton. Any other nominations? Alright. So, do we need to make a motion?
I think we have to vote.
Oh.
Yes. Hearing on nominations are closed.
Alright, nominations are closed. Can I?
All those in favor?
Okay, all of the, all those in favor of electing Commissioner Hamilton as Vice Chair, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Alright.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Alright. Move on with the agenda.
And you have this, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, the next topic on our agenda is approval of the minutes from July 28th, 2025. If you had an opportunity to read said minutes, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright. For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion's carried. I think this is now moving on to the public hearing of application of MSP Burnsville LLC for a planned unit development amendment and a conditional use permit to allow for a long-term care facility at 14400 Nicollet Court. Presenting from staff is Connor Jakes, Associate Planner. Alright. Mr. Jakes.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Great to be with you. As mentioned, the application this evening is application of MSP Burnsville LLC for a PUD amendment and a CUP to allow a long-term care facility at 14400 Nicollet Court. The subject site is shown on screen before you, outlined in yellow. The site is located within the Golden Triangle PUD area, which we'll talk about in the next slides. But located within that triangle adjacent to the subject site is the current hotel, which is the Fairfield Inn, just north of, subject site to the northeast is the, is a restaurant, the Original Pancake House. Adjacent to them is a hotel, which is the American Inn. To the south of the site is the current vacant parcel. And the site is bounded by I-35W on the west and then I-35E on the east. The site is currently zoned B3, general business, and is guided as bus, business office, retail, and the 2040 comprehensive plan. Before we jump into the proposal, I thought it'd be beneficial to go through a little bit of background and history on the site. The site was part of, or is still part of, the Golden Triangle PUD, which was approved in 1980. That PUD outlined mostly office uses within the triangle area and then... And associated low-impact uses. That PUD was then amended in 1987, or received a major amendment, which allowed for a restaurant, which is the current Original Pancake House, and a hotel, which is the current American Inn. There was also a concept and site plan for an eight-to-ten-story corporate commercial office building at the point or the south part, which is the vacant parcel currently. It was really intended to be a vocal, or a visual aspect of entering the Twin Cities metro area to kind of signify you're entering the region and the city at the point of the freeway. Following that amendment, there's another, another major amendment in 1996, which provided the current layout with the hotel approval for the current Hampton Inn, which is the site before you, and that vacant parcel. That PUD amendment recognized the eight-to-ten-story office building wasn't coming to fruition and then re-guided it for the current uses today. The site was developed in 1997 as a hotel and has operated as a hotel since its original construction. So the proposal before you consists of two requests. The first is a planned unit development amendment to allow underlying zoning district uses, which would be B3 in this case. The second request is the CUP to allow for a long-term care facility use at the site. That would, of course, be subject to conditions of approval. So the first request is the planned unit development amendment. The existing PUD restricts the use of the site strictly to a hotel use. Originally, when the applicant approached staff for discussion in the application, the proposal is to amend the PUD to allow specifically for a long-term care facility. However, current practice from planning staff in the city is to amend the PUD to allow for all underlying uses of the zoning district. So that's the application before you, is to allow all the underlying zoning district uses, which is current practice for the city. The second request, the conditional use permit, is required for a long-term care facility to operate within the B3 district. Again, so the first request, the PUD amendment, will allow all the uses within the B3. Within the B3, the conditional use is a long-term care facility. So that's why the CUP application is before you this evening for the specific use. And the intent of the CUP is really to ensure the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area and to negate any potential adverse impacts. In addition, the CUP allows for reasonable conditions to be placed on the use and use operations to further reduce potential impacts. And I'd also just note, the CUP is intended to regulate uses and not specific tenants. So the proposed use before you, again, is a long-term care facility. More specifically, the facility would provide housing and support programming for individuals recovering from substance use and related mental health challenges. We'll get more into the actual onsite operations throughout the presentation when the applicant's also here to answer any detailed questions about the use or specifics. The proposal is for a maximum of 149 beds, which comes from city code. City code outlines a calculation of square footage per person based on site area, and that calculates out to a maximum of 149 beds. Clients entering the facility would be required to have a referral from a medical practitioner or licensed professional. There's no walk-up care proposed with the facility. You have to have a referral in order to be admitted into the facility. And then just to note, the facility is required to follow State of Minnesota standards and ASAM, which is the American Society for Addiction Medicine, which is, I guess, the society that informs a lot of the state requirements and standards for long-term care facility uses. In terms of components of the use, there's four major components. And again, the applicant can answer detailed questions and go more in-depth. But it generally consists of intake, treatment, length of stay and level of care, and then discharge. For intake, clients, again, are referred, are required to have a referral in order to be admitted. Upon entering, there's personalized medical care for each client. And each client actually receives an individualized treatment plan tailored to their specific background, history, and then, yeah, proposed treatment for success. There's two levels of care proposed, which are 3.5 and 3.1, which we'll talk about in a couple of slides. And there is a condition included that requires intake protocol be produced by the applicant, submitted to police and fire for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. In terms of treatment, upon entering the facility, each client would go through a comprehensive assessment, which ensures a customized treatment plan is the outcome of that assessment. The treatment plan would include goals, strategies, methods for relapse prevention, and mechanisms that promote future success for each individual client. The provider would be required to review the treatment plan with the client every seven days to evaluate progress and effectiveness of the treatment that's being provided for that specific client. In terms of level of care and length of stay, as I mentioned, there's two different levels, 3.5 and 3.1. The 3.5 level of care is more intense, requires 24-hour care and monitoring with structured support. Care would include comprehensive treatment interventions such as group therapy, medical management, and psychosocial support. Given it's a more intense program and service, the length of stay is between 30 to 60 days per client. The level 3.1 is less intense. Clients don't require 24-hour care. It's really intended and suitable for clients in early recovery. And care would include structured therapy, support, and then just basic medical care. The length of stay for clients in 3.1 level would be between 60 and 90 days, given it's a less intensive treatment service. In terms of discharge, client discharge is a structured program and protocol. The provider is required to prepare a comprehensive discharge summary for each client. That summary would include the client's progress, challenges, strengths, and recommendations for ongoing care. The real intent is just to provide a smooth transition from care into the next steps of the client's life as they enter back into the world. Another aspect of the use I wanted to touch on briefly is staffing. The applicant is required to maintain 24-hour staffing onsite. There are minimum levels set by the state that are also included in the conditions of approval, which are listed on screen before you. In addition, we'll talk about this when we get to the conditions. But there is a section specific to staffing within the conditions of approval. And the applicant is required to produce a staffing plan that's reviewed and approved by police and fire department prior to issuance of a building permit. The other aspect of the use I wanted to touch on briefly was security. All treatment areas and secured spaces are restricted to authorized personnel only via an electronic security system. The applicant, similar to the other plans I mentioned, would be required to submit a visitor procedure protocol that's required to be approved by the police and fire department prior to issuance of a building permit. And that protocol detailed various items such as a check-in, checkout procedure, visitor log, and screening eligibility prior to accessing the treatment areas. In terms of architecture and the exterior, there are no changes proposed to the exterior other than potentially signage. The applicant would likely remove the existing signage and then install new signage, which would be in accordance with the sign code. Obviously, there'd be interior work required. That work would be required to meet building code standards and long treatment, long-term care facility use standards. In terms of parking, ordinance requires 24 stalls. The applicants noted there are 99 stalls existing onsite, 95 standard stalls and four ADA-accessible stalls. The applicant has assured staff that parking is sufficient for staffing onsite as well as visitor drop-off and pickup as well. To note on conditions of approval, as you probably read through the packet, there was a number of conditions, 26 to be exact. So I just wanted to kind of walk through some of those and talk through the proposed conditions. So the applicant did submit draft conditions of approval for staff review and implementation. Of the 26 proposed conditions, 22 were proposed by the applicant and four were proposed by staff. Of those 22 that were proposed by the applicant, staff revised those, worked with public safety, police and fire department to ensure they meet city standards for writing and were formatted for city side of things. The police and fire departments were crucial and were involved since the very first steps of this application, conducted a comprehensive review and assisted in developing the conditions of approval. A lot of the conditions were informed by the applicant's public safety impact analysis, which details anticipated calls for service and just impacts to our public safety system as a whole. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that this was a collaborative effort between the applicant and staff to come to conditions that make sense and allow the use to operate effectively while also providing safeguards from a city perspective in terms of staffing and adjacent uses. Within the conditions of approval, there are five sections, which include permitting, licensing, and regulatory compliance, building safety and code compliance, staffing and personnel, security and access control, and community relations and transparency. Those categories were just implemented to make it more reader-friendly for the conditions and easier to actually implement and refer back to. The other thing to note about the conditions is that there are a total of seven plans that are required to be submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit to the city. Those plans would be required to be reviewed and approved by our police and fire departments. And those plans would include a comprehensive security plan, an emergency response plan, a protocol for illegal substances and contraband, a staffing plan, a comprehensive intake protocol, and a visitor procedure protocol. In terms of planning considerations, again, staff work collaboratively with the applicant to ensure a successful use while having effective safeguards in place to negate adverse impacts on surrounding properties and, more specifically, that area within the Golden Triangle as a whole. The proposal before you does meet the findings for approval of a CUP, which were provided in the packet. And the proposal does meet the intent of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. With that, the recommendation is on screen. The applicant's in attendance. We have a member on Zoom of the applicant's team, I believe. And just want to note that there were two letters of support that were submitted today. So those are provided at your seats, I believe. With that, staff's available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. So at this time, can the Commissioners ask questions of Mr. Jakes? Or do I have to open the public hearing?
No, it can, they can be directed to him before you do the public hearing.
Cool. Alright, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Jakes before we open the public hearing? Alright, Commissioner Hamilton?
Who's going to be managing the health facility?
Commissioner Hamilton, are you referring to applicant side of things or like city ongoing monitoring?
I guess I'm referring to the applicant more than anything.
Yeah, the applicant currently doesn't have a tenant specified or in mind. This is really approvals for the use, and a tenant would come at a later point.
If I can...
When, when a tenant is determined, is there a vetting process that they need to go through with the city?
That's correct, Commissioner Hamilton. So they would be required, one, to submit a building permit for the interior work. But before that, would have to submit all of those seven protocols and plans that I outlined for the conditions of approval. And then I would also note that anytime a new operator were to take over the site for a long-term care facility use, they would be required to amend the conditional use permit as well. So the first tenant or operator of the site wouldn't have to amend it, but anybody after that would have to amend that. But prior to getting a permit, they would have to submit those plans and have them approved by the fire department and police department as well.
Is there multiple operators, or is this one that encompasses the whole building?
Yeah, I believe it's one operator that would encompass the whole building, the two levels. But the applicant might be able to touch on that in their comments as well.
Any other questions, Commissioner Anderson?
What type of security and staffing do they need in that 24-hour cycle? Now, you noted X amount per patient, but they're not all working at the same time.
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson, I would defer that to the applicant to kind of detail specific staffing that's required, as I believe there's specifics for medical staff as well as just onsite security and various staff. So they would be able to speak more to that and the state requirements that they would be under.
If I can add to, Commissioner, as part of the conditions of approval, they're required to submit a detailed safety, security plan that needs to be reviewed by our police department and public safety teams. As the, as Connor stated, since the tenant is not known at this time, that is one of the required documents that needs to be reviewed and approved prior to an issuance of a building permit. So at this time, the applicant and applicant does discuss security more. But as part of the collaboration with the city and the applicant, we want to see a detailed security plan to make sure that security is onsite 24 hours a day, not just to provide security for the site, but, you know, de-escalation and have other trainings onsite just in case events do occur. But I'll let the applicant kind of address that a little bit more when they have a chance.
Just to follow up, I don't know who can answer this. If there's a dispute between the police department and fire department and the applicant, say, over security, how is that resolved? I know that the city won't issue the permit. Is that, how is that issue resolved?
That is a, that is a good question, Commissioner. So, um, so far, we've had a great, working relationship, and I think it will continue. So generally, what I see it kind of happening is it would be negotiated on what the, what the best practices are. And that's, I think, we'll follow through on what the best practices are for these uses. I can, I don't, not quite sure how to answer that. Our city attorney, Corinne Henny, is here. Do you have any thoughts on how we would have kind of approached that? And it's not muted, so, so.
So the requirement is that the plan has to be submitted to the police and fire department for review. And if there were a dispute, the city's not going to issue the building permit until the city is satisfied that the conditions of the permit have been met.
So to add on to, I think what we would do too as a staff, you know, we would meet with the applicant and talk through what our desire needs are, what our public safety needs are, to fulfill that obligation and then work together on that one. Otherwise...
Also, just jump in too. So that's kind of, sorry. That's like prior to the permit issuance. So that would satisfy kind of the pre-operation aspects that, you know, produces the plan that we're comfortable with, the applicant's comfortable with, that we think is going to support the use while also having a safeguard. But after that permit's issued, there'd be ongoing maintenance, or ongoing, just kind of watch of the site, I guess, from a public safety standpoint. And our public safety team has assured just staff from a city standpoint that they have sufficient resources to do that. As well as, the conditions of approval do also require the applicant to meet with the city or the provider, you know, if there are issues, to provide ongoing meetings to kind of work through those issues should they arise. The applicant would also be required to submit an annual report that would detail site operations, you know, if people are terminated from care, things like that. And our public safety team would be reviewing that in detail as well.
So is the tenant, are they a leasing? Are they owning the facility?
Yeah, I'll defer that to the applicant. My understanding is that the owner would still own the facility and then lease it to a provider or a tenant that would operate.
And that provider has not been determined yet?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Again, I want to reiterate though, when we're looking at conditional use permit, we have to look at it through the lens of the use, not the applicant or tenant. So that's why we have all the safeguards in place here. And requires, once they do select a tenant, to come talk to us so we can make sure that the conditions of approvals are met and work with that applicant or that tenant going forward, and the property owner.
Commissioner Anderson?
Does the CUP only allow the long-term facilities in the B3 at this location? Or would this be a use across the city?
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson, it would be specific to this site only. So that CUP would be allowing a long-term care facility to operate at this subject site, not within the entire city.
Questions, Commissioners, for staff? Alright, I think we can, Commissioner Anderson?
So at this point, we know nothing about any modifications to the interior of the building to ensure ADA compliance and security compliance, or if there's a locked part of the building?
I can, Commissioner, I can address that question. We have had conversations with the applicant about potential improvements that would be needing to be done to the building once a tenant is identified. There will be including upgrade, removing some of the hotel rooms to create some office spaces, and added security measures to the specific floors one, by the tenant, once they're selected. The applicant did not want to make that investment now as the hotel will continue to operate until a tenant is found. Once a tenant is found, they will make the necessary improvements to the site to be consistent with the conditions of approval and any kind of building permit or any other state regulations for such use.
Do we expect to see this back then at some point through the Planning Commission?
Commissioner, not this time. Once it's approved tonight, we'll go to Planning Commission. However, the, there is a condition in there stating that if the user does change, that has to come back through. So the first time, no. But if they do switch to a different user, for example, say they switch to another lockroom care, we would see this application again just to amend that conditional use permit to make sure that they can address, or if there's any changes ending to be made at that time. Right now, the applicant's hoping to go forward out to market with the conditions in place. As Connor stated, vast majority of them did become from the applicant. So they know what conditions are needed to go out to the market and find a user to fulfill the goal of having a long-term care facility at this subject property.
Commissioner Anderson?
I noted in the newspaper that up in Brooklyn Park, I think it was, there was a long-term care facility operating out of a motel there, but the motel was still operating as a motel too. This would not be the case here, correct?
Commissioner, that is correct. This here would be solely, it would be operated as a hotel until a user is selected. There is a number of safeguards in place where the staff or city staff does visit the hotels regularly to make sure that, for safety inspections, kind of similar to what was in the newspaper on that other use. So the plan here is the operation of the hotel would cease once a tenant is selected and go through there. And then I think the applicant can talk to that too, through the process.
Alright, I need a clarification. Alright. So, once a tenant has been selected, where does the process go from there?
Yeah, Commissioner Hamilton, once the owner selects a tenant, that tenant and the owner would likely come in and meet with city staff to walk through the conditions of approval so they understand all of the conditions and everything is on the table up front. And then from there, they would draft their seven plans and then submit those to the police and fire department for review and approval. Once those are approved, they would move to submit a building permit. We would review that building permit with our typical process, building department for construction, ADA accessibility, all of those standards, as well as a planning review to ensure it meets all city code standards. And then at that point, we would issue a building permit. But that's after they draft all the seven plans and have those approved by police and fire.
Now, does that go to Planning Commission? Or does that go to city council or strictly internal to staff?
That'd be internal to staff with the way the conditions are written.
And if I can add to, to Connor's comments, this is a little unique here and, you know, that the tenant has been selected. But however, analogy that I was, our city attorney kind of threw out to me as we were talking earlier about this case, it's kind of like a drive-through. You know, a lot of times when we're approving a drive-through use, we don't approve if it's McDonald's or Burger King. We're approving the drive-through. So in the case here, we're approving a long-term care facility through a conditional use permit, they'll run up the land. So that's the kind of analogy where, that I think kind of sits well with me when we're thinking about this, as we're reviewing this use. Just wanted to add that. Because the conditional use permit will run up the land until terminated or revoked by, either terminated by the property owner or revoked by city council.
Any other questions from Commissioners for staff? Seeing none, are we ready to open the public hearing at 6:59 PM? Do I invite the applicant up or anyone wishing to speak?
Anyone wishing to speak, yeah. And they should identify themselves with their address, name and address.
Alright, anyone wishing to speak on this agenda topic, please approach the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Well, I'll start off this evening. My name is Megan Rogers. I'm an attorney with Larkin Hoffman, and I represent the property owner and the applicant. for this application. I'll sort of just start with a little bit of how we got here, and then happily am available to answer the commissioner's questions. I think I've jotted most of them down here, and to talk a little bit about the procedure and why we're applying at this point in time before we have an underlying user selected. So first and foremost, so this facility was particularly selected for transition to behavioral health and substance use treatment, a long-term care center, based upon the underlying zoning district, and the existence of this long-term care center description within the city ordinance. So the proposed use meets the definition, and also meets the performance standards of the ordinance for the business district. And it's particularly well-suited, not only from a zoning perspective, but it's also well-suited just from a locational perspective. So, so when a potential tenant is looking to occupy a building like this, or to establish a behavioral health treatment facility, we're looking for, for three major components. Number one, we're looking for good commercial adjacency. Number two, we are also looking for a high level of ability for people to thrive within a space. And so hotels make a particularly good transitional location, because they have long been used as transitional places. You know, people stay at the Hampton Inn to visit their families, to stay on a road trip, to stay if their kitchen is getting rebuilt. And so for those same reasons, hotels are particularly well-suited for these 30 to 90 day stays for behavioral health treatment services. And then lastly, it's important also for the facility to have a level of privacy, right? So this is a medical facility, and that's what it's intended to be repurposed as. And there, just as there needs to be place and space for the community, then there needs to be place and space for the clients who are being served there. And this particular site is well-suited for that. It's located off of, it's well-accessible to family members and friends, but it also is set back from major roadways, and is not adjacent to residential properties. One of the things, you know, that can appear, I think, obscure in all of these conditions of approval, is why, like, why do we have them? Why are we presenting 22 conditions of approval as part of this application? And it's really because I don't have, I don't have a tenant standing next to me here tonight. And I don't have a tenant standing next to me here tonight, because as I'm sure many of you have sort of followed within the, within this space in Minnesota, there's been a lot of disruption in the behavioral health and substance use treatment community over the course of the last six months. And one of the things that we have heard from the community as a whole is that we need to be proactive in creating spaces for residential treatment to occur, and having them permitted, so that a provider can come in and apply for their Minnesota license to operate at a facility. A provider cannot operate at a facility and cannot apply for their Minnesota license until it is permitted by the city where the underlying use is allowed. And so in order for us to begin that process, which is, this is the first step of a fairly significant licensing process, we need to create the space for an operator to be able to move forward. And, and that's what we do through these conditions of approval. So, the conditions of approval are developed by a three-party team. And that part, that team is myself, I'm a land use and planning attorney, who works heavily in the behavioral health treatment space, and then Jason Lennox, who's available for comments and questions on the phone tonight with One Arrow Group. Jason is a behavioral health and substance use disorder treatment provider. He is a policy expert in this space, and serves as the president of the advocacy group that meets with the Minnesota Legislature on these issues, and has, and provided us with the staffing ratios, the public impact analysis, and all of the supplemental materials that are part of your packet to say, how can a successful facility be run at this site? And we are not looking for a minimum standard for this site. The property owner is here with me tonight, and we are seeking to run a best-in-class facility. And the conditions that we've put before you, we believe allows us to run a best-in-class facility at this particular location, and that's why we have offered them up. Not because they're required by state statute, but because they're really required by a best practices analysis. So, so one of the things that I heard asked preliminarily was, how is, how is a staffing ratio modeled out? So on every shift, and within your packet and the public safety analysis, you see how we're intending to scale up this site. And we're not intending to have the maximum number of people to be served right away. It has to be scaled over time in order for us to hire appropriately over time. And that's part of the plan that will be submitted to staff when we have a provider in place. But generally speaking, at full occupancy, we'll have eight to 10 technicians per day shift, six, four to six technicians per sleeping shift, which, and this exceeds state standards. Then during waking shift, eight licensed drug and alcohol counselors, and then also six to eight, I'm just reading my notes here, and then six to eight nurses per wake ship and shift, and three to five per sleeping shift, with an additional four mental health professionals also present on the site. So we have a high contingency in terms of medical treatment professionals that are available on the site, and that are here to, to serve the people who are coming here for service. Any questions in terms of the staffing ratios and how that works out? Just to, just to be really clear, that there is a balance and a diversity of care needs. So we both have medical treatment, we have social, emotional treatment, we have drug and alcohol counseling, and then we also have that mental health component. Yes?
Sure.
I do have one question. When you're talking about staffing, I was reading through the materials, there is what the state requires, and that's what I'm seeing in your ratios, but you're saying that you're actually going above what the state requires?
Yes, that's correct. So it's, it's the mix of staffing that is in excess of the state requirements that we're proposing for this site.
Okay.
So then, you, one of the questions that I think is, is really that I'm, that I'm hearing resonate in the, with the commission, is, but where does the city have control? Well, as the city attorney well explained, the city holds the cards in approving the seven plans that need to be submitted. So a provider is going to need to come forward, and is going to need to demonstrate full compliance with these conditions of approval. Otherwise, the city is not going to allow for the use to operate. That is the, that's the full stop. And that's why we, you know, we tried to solve for the question of not having a provider here standing next to me, and this is the solution that we've really come up with, is that the city can be assured of all of the compliance mechanisms that it's looking for in a project like this, because any provider who is going to operate within this building will need to comply with those conditions of approval. If they do not comply with it, so if the city issues its seven permits and plans, and it's reviewed by planning and police and fire and your building inspector, and all of those things come back compliant, and then the operator does not comply with those terms, the conditional use permit can be revoked. And that's why those conditions of approval are really specific, because oftentimes, as I'm sure the city attorney can opine on, conditions of approval can often be very broad, and they can be nebulous. But if you have one condition of approval that's not being correctly monitored or, or complied with by an operator, that allows you to bring that operator and the property owner in for revocation. Just one of those, right? So it's not a mix of, of uses, it's not a mix of how, whether or not it's close to compliance. These are really clear standards, and they're intended to be that way. And, and fire and police would not have signed off on our plans had they not been so. And so I'd also just like to further reiterate that these, these aren't, these are not thing, yes, they certainly originated from us, but they originated from, from our coalition as a basis to answer city questions, and some hard questions from the city. And these have been narrowly tailored to specifically address the concerns that were raised by city staff, that were, and were raised by your police and fire team, and to make sure that they're enforceable moving forward. And then, you know, the other thing that, that certainly could be added as a condition of approval, but that we think is unsaid, is that any leaseholder, any, any lease agreement for this property would need to comply with the underlying conditions of approval. Now, we are going to do that from a compliance standpoint, because we're not going to be a good landlord if we don't require that along the way. We have agreed to these conditions in advance of, of selecting the users. And then lastly, I heard questions about modifications to the building as a whole. And so there are no modifications planned for the exterior of the building. The first floor of the building does have a number of guest rooms that could be modified over time to create larger group therapy rooms. But again, going back to sort of the underlying beneficial, beneficial nature of converting hotels to this potential use, is that it has a gym, it has a large seating area for a kitchen, it has community spaces, it has a business center, it has many of the amenities that you would want to seek to build out for a behavioral health treatment facility and a long-term care facility. And, and that's really, and that goes back to sort of why we've targeted this type of a space. And then I certainly stand here ready to answer any of the, your specific questions.
Question, you talk about modeling. I don't know, do you guys own facilities today?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the, so some of the materials that were provided as part of the public impact safety analysis are facilities that we own and operate today, and where we have found providers who are operating at those spaces underneath similar conditions. And so we do have a facility in Eden Prairie that was previously used as a long-term stay hotel. It has been transitioned to behavioral health that actually has a broader continuum of care, so there's withdrawal and detox management at that site as well. So a little bit more diverse and higher on the medical focus for those needs, but it is operated and has been operational for over six months now, and is very successful, and, and no police calls there either. And, oh, another thing that I really want to focus on, so we talked a little bit about security at this site. And I want to just sort of talk about the emphasis on security, and that is that this is a secure facility for the people who are being served. This is not a locked facility, okay? So this is not for people to be, to be kept away from anyone else. This is for, for people to be, to make sure that they have a monitored environment, so that they have a space to, to recover. It is not intended, it's, it's not a locked facility in any way for those people who are, who are living within it.
Any other questions?
So I think one of the, the longstanding issues that we oftentimes see is that this is a very hypothetical use. It's not something that we necessarily have a tremendous amount of experience with, necessarily in your everyday role as planning commissioners. And so tonight, for, for your consideration this evening, we do have a number of members of your community that have been through residential treatment, and would like to tell you a little bit more about their experience, and how this building functions, would function in practice. So thank you for your time, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Rolando Ruiz, and I stand before you someone that has battled addiction and the criminal justice system. I went to Prior Lake High School, and at the height of my addiction, I spent a lot of that time up and down this County Road 42 corridor, everywhere from Shakopee to Apple Valley, and everywhere between, specifically, the hotel areas. Spent a lot of time there, getting high, using drugs, selling drugs, I was addicted to heroin. Spent a lot of time chasing darkness and living in that hopelessness and despair. And I know these spaces well. I know that there are spaces where people need help in this community, in that area. But also, at the same time, I know that I was a problem in my, in my addiction at that time, not just to myself, to the community, but to law enforcement. Had the cops called on me plenty of times, and well-deserving at the time. But the truth is, in the long run, jail isn't what, isn't what did it for me. Jail didn't save me, it wasn't tickets, it wasn't restitution or community service, but it was long-term residential treatment. It wasn't always glamorous being in long-term residential treatment, but it gave me a secure place to learn how to deal with life, to, I was in a group setting, where I learned to go, I was going, doing groups, counseling with people, doing, going to church, going to do chores, doing, to learn how to do everyday things that I didn't know how to do in my past life. And that's what I needed to get back out into the community. A lot of group sessions, a lot of sharing, and, you know, working through struggles with people that are in the same boat as me, headed in the same direction, and it wasn't easy. But it, what it did was give me a, a safe space for accountability, for structure, and stability, not just to get sober and stay sober, but to rebuild my life and actually create a life for myself outside of just getting high. And that's, that's one of the reasons that this project means so much to me. When I was asked to, you know, to be here, is because I'm standing here before you, someone that's been through these, these programs, and I'm standing here not just as a statistic. I've been incarcerated seven and a half years altogether collectively, between prisons, jails, and institutions. But I stand here before you also a recent college graduate. I just majored in, minored in, majored in marketing, minored in biblical studies, and as of November, I stand before you a homeowner. And also, so I'm a taxpayer, I'm a better brother, I'm a better friend, and a leader in the community. And all that wouldn't have been able to happen without programs like this. It taught me how to be a, a member of the society and pay my taxes, even when I don't want to. But those are just things that I've had to learn in situations like this, because it was a controlled, long-term environment, that people took time to, to groom me and to put me in that space. So I'm living proof that programs like this work, that not everyone is a statistic. And when you guys talk about these, the beds, 149, I see 149 opportunities for someone to be another version of me, to get through their mess and be a productive member of society. So I strongly support this project, and I wholeheartedly believe that it'll make Burnsville not just a healthier, but a safer place as well. Thank you for letting me share my story.
He joked that I didn't want to go after him, and now I understand why. My name is Robin Garcia, and I am also here, a member of the community. I've actually been to 3.5 and 3.1 level of care. I am also in long-term recovery. Prior to going to long-term, I struggled with addiction for 15-plus years. I tried everything but residential treatment. I went to NA, I went to AA, I went to jail, I went to the hospital, I went to detox. And finally, I decided, kind of towards the end of it, that I just wanted to surrender. I wanted to do the one thing that I never was going to do, which was residential treatment. So I did do a 30 to 90 day high-intensity program, and then from there, I actually transitioned to the low-intensity residential program. So I was in treatment for about six months in some level of residential care. And I can say going into it that it was the structure, and the compassion, and the mental health aspect of it, that really allowed me to kind of lay a foundation that I still, seven and a half years later, use to this day. I am also a graduate of college, I am an LA DC, but I don't practice, as at the assessments that they were stating at the beginning. I work with multiple programs all over the state of Minnesota now, working to have as many assessments available as possible, because I do know that that one assessment and the opportunity to go to a residential treatment center has the ability to completely change somebody's life. I would say that my life isn't just changed now, it's a whole new life. I also just recently bought a home, never thought that was going to be possible, I didn't even think I'd be able to rent again because of my history, and now I own a home. And I spend every single day dedicated to serving the community that helped save my life. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the podium? Oh, we have one on Zoom. Oh, we have one here. Can you approach the podium?
Oh.
Did you want to approach the podium?
Can I?
Sure, yep, approach the podium. Share your name and your address for us.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't do a proposal written or anything like that. But I guess after something happened today, I just kind of wanted to see when the next city meeting was, and wanted to go to it. My name is Carm Tanhoff.
Is this in regards to the agenda topic, or?
What do you mean, the agenda topic?
The public hearing that we're discussing now for the planned unit development?
No, it's not in regard to what they were, this is a new topic.
Oh, sure.
Can I do that?
You know, I, I think we need to continue on with this public hearing, staff. Do you have any recommendations?
I'm actually gonna go to our city attorney for advisement on this one.
So, the planning commission is hearing testimony on a potential redevelopment or different use of the property at 14400 Nicollet. If you're not here to talk on that topic, then you should sit down.
Okay.
They'll conclude their discussion about this, and then... They'll conclude their discussion about this, and then, I don't know whether this body typically has like an open mic type of, no, so that, do you have the option of directing her to go to the city council?
Yeah, that's a great point. After this meeting, I'm happy to talk to you and we can figure out next steps.
See the process.
Yep, I can talk to you.
Because I would like to talk about, it's regarding animals.
Okay, happy to talk to you after this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It does look like we have one on Zoom. Hi there.
Hi, everybody.
Say your name and address for us.
My name is Gina Evans, and I live at 283-108th Street Northwest in Zimmerman, Minnesota.
All right.
I serve as the Director of Government Relations at Minnesota Dalton King Challenge. I'm also the VP of the Board of Governors for March, the Professional Association, the Professional Association for Addiction Professionals here in Minnesota. I'm a founding board member of the Minnesota Justice Research Center as well. I grew up right here in Dakota County. I went to Sibley High School in Hanover Grove Heights. I grew up in a really traumatic, abusive and chaotic home. And chaotic home characterized by drugs, alcohol and violence. So no one was surprised when, at 13, I entered into my first short-term treatment program. And after that, I was in three more short-term treatment programs. And by short-term, I mean like just 30 days. And then in 2003, I entered into a long-term treatment program where I spent 12 months learning who I was, how to regulate my feelings, how to cope with challenges and struggles, how to be a good neighbor and a productive member of society. I didn't learn all of my terrible coping behaviors in 30 days, and I needed more time than that in a long-term facility to be the best version of myself. In July, I celebrated 22 years of transformation and recovery. Like myself, some people need a longer runway to get well, and I am petitioning this commission to approve a conditional use permit for a long-term care facility so that others like myself can find the same freedom that I've been blessed with. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom or in the chambers that would like to approach the podium? I am not seeing anyone. May I close the public hearing at 7:23? I can turn it to the commissioners now for any further discussion. Commissioners?
Thank you, Chair. Definitely, as evidenced by the testimony, this type of facility does help a lot of people. I mean, I'll go out and say it, it's not the kind of thing that anybody really wants to have in their backyard, and that's part of the beauty of this site, is it's really in nobody's backyard. It seems like I'm, I'm expressing my support for the, for the proposal based on the location and based on the testimony that we've heard. And also want to commend the applicant for working with the city staff to go through a process and to meet all the city requirements, and that's, I know that's, it takes a lot of effort, but it also means a lot that they're trying to, you know, to meet the city's, meet the city's concerns. So that is my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Commissioners, any additional discussion, comments? Commissioner Hamilton?
So I don't deny the importance of this type of facility. What I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is the hypothetical aspect of all this. You know, it's, there's not a tenant we know nothing about. We know nothing about any potential modifications interior. You know, it, I understand, you know, they've got the staffing ratio figured out, but I guess, you know, my, it's, I have too many unknowns that I have to contemplate.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. No questions?
Are you looking to entertain a motion?
I am. I mean, I'd like to say that, I think that the use of the property, the conditional use of this property, I think is a beautiful use. I think it represents the values of Burnsville. It seems to represent the underlying comprehensive plan, at least from my perspective. And I like the statement that best-in-class, you know, in such a gateway property could be a great thing for Burnsville to have available. And so I just wanted to make that statement, and yes, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Okay, I have the paperwork in front of me, so you don't have to put it on the screen. So I move that we recommend to the city council the approval of the PUD amendment to allow underlying uses of the zoning district and approval of the CUP to allow a long-term care facility use at 14400 Nicollet Court. The CUP for a long-term facility shall be subject to the 26 conditions that are listed. And I think in, in, just for time purposes, we're not going to read all 26 conditions, but they are part of the public record. So that's my motion.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
One second.
Thank you, Commissioner Long. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Opposed.
All right. Motion's carried. All right, we get to move on to the next agenda topic? Thank you all. Updates. Next Planning Commission meeting, September 8?
Yes, a quick update for the commission. Our next Planning Commission meeting will be on, I had to say it earlier, September 22nd, I believe that's, it is. The 8th will be canceled. We have a couple of applications that aren't quite ready yet that we're working on that should be ready for the Monday, September 22nd meeting. Also, since the last meeting, we did have two items go before the city council for review and approval, and I lost my notes and I apologize. The first one was for, the city council unanimously approved, I deleted both my notes. I'm going off memory now. They did approve the interim use permit for Shalagol. Unanimously approved that one, and the CUP amendment at Toyota dealership. Both those items were approved by the city council. And again, thank you, everyone, at that meeting, that was a little unique, but we got through it. I thank you all for chairing that meeting and everything. Thank you again. And, yeah, those two items were approved by the city council at their last meeting. Apologize, my notes are not up here. But that's it for staff and for updates.
Thank you so much. And I think that leaves us with adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right, motion has passed. That's a wrap.